Love Your Block is here in the city of Gary, Indiana.
The city of Gary's Love Your Block program is funded by grants to help improve neighborhoods.
Love Your Block is so important to Mayor Eddie D. Melton and city leadership. Why? Because it empowers residents to play an active role in shaping the future of their neighborhood. Join us in our community conversations where you are invited to share your ideas on what you want to see in your neighborhood.
In year one, our three key neighborhoods are Midtown, Black Oak, and Glen Park, the University Park area.
Our aim is simple, to improve the quality of life for all of our residents for years to come. Not only that, but to create a sense of pride and attachment to where you live. Be on the lookout for more information on how to get involved. By establishing partnerships with local organizations, residents, businesses, churches, non-for-profits, we'll truly create a neighborhood where even you will love your block.
Hey, what's up everyone? This is Mayor Eddie Melton of the great city of Gary, Indiana, and I'm sending a special invitation now to each and every one of you to join me on March 6th from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at St. Timothy's Church in Gary, Indiana, at 1600 West 25th Avenue. This is going to be a night where we're going to inform the public on our proposal between the city of Gary and the Hard Rock Casino for the Lake County Convention Center. That's when it happens right here in this city. That state senator, I fought very hard to get Senate Bill 434 passed, and this Senate bill that passed almost two years ago will give us the opportunity to have this great economic engine right here in the city of Gary. This will yield multiple jobs, increase our tax base, and opportunities to bring economic vitality in the city of Gary. Join us on March 6th from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at St. Timothy's Church right here in the city of Gary, and I want to thank Pastor Jackson and the entire congregation of St. Timothy's Church for allowing us to be with you on that night. God bless.
Recycling at home is easy and helps keep our city clean and sustainable, but what can you actually recycle? Let's break it down. Paper and fiber, yes, you can recycle. Newspapers, office paper magazines, books, file folders, junk mail, glossy paper, and envelopes, just toss them in. But remember, no shredded paper as it can't be sorted properly. Flatten those cardboard boxes and cereal boxes before recycling, but no greasy pizza boxes, those go in the trash. Aluminum cans, tin cans, and even pie tins can be recycled, but make sure they're clean. Give them a quick rinse to remove food residue before recycling. No aerosol cans as they're considered hazardous. Glass bottles and jars, yes, glass containers for food and drinks are recyclable, but wash them out first. Keep the lids on after rinsing, but no mirrors, window glass, or ceramics as they don't break down the same way. Plastics, it depends. Plastic bottles, jugs, and containers, yes, but plastic bags take out containers and prescription bottles? Nope. Instead, take plastic bags to a grocery store drop-off, or better yet, bring your own reusable bags when you shop. We only accept plastic bottles and containers numbered 1 to 5 and 7. Check the recycling symbol before dropping them off. Milk cartons, juice boxes, and broth cartons are recyclable, but remember to remove the straws first and rinse them out before recycling. Important recycling reminders. Avoid contamination. All recycling materials must be properly cleaned. Even a small amount of food or drink residue can spoil an entire load. Keep the caps, bottle caps can be left on glass and plastic containers, no grocery bags. Do not put recyclables in plastic grocery bags, they can't be processed properly. Beyond recycling, reduce and reuse. Recycling is great, but reducing and reusing make an even bigger impact. Choose eco-friendly products, carry a reusable water bottle, and swap plastic utensils for sustainable alternatives. Small changes lead to a cleaner, greener Gary. Your city, your future. Let's keep it clean.
Did you know the city of Gary has a 311 app? You can report any non-emergency request right from your smartphone. Need help dealing with unfair landlords? Use the app.
Girl, I just don't understand. I'm paying rent and my landlord isn't fixing any of the issues in this apartment. What should I do?
You know you can report it on the Gary 311 app. Do you have it?
What's that?
Let me show you. Just go to your app store.
Or maybe you need to request the birth certificate.
Yeah, I can't find my birth certificate.
Well, it probably just got misplaced, none to move. Actually, we can request a new one through the Gary 311 app.
Okay. New technology. I'm in.
Let me show you.
And guess what? You can even report illegal dumping.
Look at him, just dumping his garbage on permanent property.
Well, call them in 4K. You know we can report them on the Gary 311 app and to GPD's testific.
That's good.
Never feel frustrated again about an issue. Use the Gary 311 app to report all your non-emergency needs. It's a free application that allows users to report community issues, pinpoint the location with GPS, attached photos, and more, all right from your smartphone. Download the Gary 311 app today, available on iOS and Android.
Greetings. My name is Derek Cannon, and I'm Chief of Police for the city of Gary. I am before you today not only as a dedicated member of the community, but as a public servant to share with you the progress that we've made together in the last year, building towards a safer and more connected environment. While challenges remain, I am proud to report significant decreases in violent crime, to report a drop in non-fatal shootings of 10%, a drop in homicides of 23%. And not only with that drop, there's been a 74% clearance rate in those homicide investigations. Patrol activity has seen a remarkable growth. Over 9,800 extra patrols and privilege checks were conducted, an increase of 118% from 2023. Shots fired calls dropped by 17% with 1,368 reported versus 1,644 in the previous year. Citations issued more than doubled, reaching 9,679, 148% increase over the previous year. This positive trend is a testament to the collaboration between our officers, our partners, and you, our community members, especially the residents who actively report suspicious activity and provide valuable information to our department. We've also made strides in enhancing transparency and accountability within the department. This includes our body worn camera program, enhanced training, and just elevated patrols in a proactive way, which allows us a greater oversight and also a different type of engagement with the community. Furthermore, we actively engage in with community leaders and organizations to better understand the concerns of our neighborhoods and our population here in the city of Gary. This has led to the development of partnerships with several community-based initiatives designed to address the specific needs and build stronger relationships between the law enforcement community and our community here at large. In terms of traffic safety, fatal traffic accidents fell by 39% with 11 incidents versus 18 incidents in the previous year, and non-fatal traffic accidents declined by 3% with 3,196 incidents versus 3,303 in 2023. Vehicles towed and impounded increased by 18% with 3,081 vehicles towed compared to 2,608 in 2023. Special operations and investigations. The SWAT team conducted 55 operations leading to 72 detainees and the seizure of 37 firearms. General crimes resulted in 106 defendants charged with 506 felonies and 87 misdemeanor charges during their investigations. Narcotics investigations group led to 52 defendants charged with 112 felonies and 40 misdemeanor charges. We are committed to continuous improvement and remain open to feedback from all members of our community. I urge you to continue to partner with us by reporting crimes, attending community forums, and engaging in open dialogue. Together, we can create a safer, greater Gary with everyone.
Hey, what's up everyone? This is Mayor Eddie Melton, right here in the great city of Gary, Indiana. I'm truly excited about today. We have officially kicked off our Relight the City initiative where we are fixing over 2,000 streetlights throughout the entire city of Gary. And I want to thank our city engineer, Mr. William Allen, for all of his hard work. He's been working on this for an entire year, our first year in office, and today you see the work behind us is just getting started. So Will, tell us a little bit about this project.
Thank you, Mayor Eddie Melton. Excited to be here. It took a lot of effort to understand exactly what we had in the great city of Gary, all of our assets, and right now we're on Bird Street. So as you can see, we have an old high-pressure sodium fixture that just got disconnected from one of our existing poles and replaced with a new LED fixture. This particular fixture is over.
Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome everyone to the city of Gary Plan Commission meeting for February 20th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, council.
Terrell Bonds?
Present.
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 Thank you, council. We will need to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to include the nomination and election of officers for this 2025 new year. Is there a second?
Second.
Having been moved improperly second to amend the agenda, roll call, council.
All right, Terrell Bonds?
Yes.
Sorry, Lloyd Fisher?
Yes.
Tom Sarah?
Yes.
Willie Miller? Sherman Wilson? And William Allen?
Yes.
We'll show that the agenda is amended by a 6 to 0 vote.
Thank you, council. That being the case, we will now begin the nominations, and I will turn the meeting over to Attorney Marco Molina to run the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, President Bonds. So we will show the positions from last year, the president and vice president, as being vacated, and we will have new elections per the ordinance, which are required in the February meeting of the Plan Commission. Nominations are open for the election of commission officers for the year 2025. May I have a nomination for president, please?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Tom Sarah for president.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second. And we will run the roll call on Tom Sarah for president. Terrell Bonds?
Yes.
Lloyd Fisher? Tom Sarah?
Abstain.
Sherman Wilson? Willie Miller? William Allen?
Yes.
We'll show by a vote of five in favor, one abstention, Tom Sarah is the president for 2025. May I have a nomination for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Terrell Bonds for vice president.
All right, we have a nomination and a second for Terrell Bonds to serve as vice president. I suppose I should ask if you do accept the nomination. I forgot to ask Mr. Sarah.
I was waiting for that part. I will, I will serve, I will be of service.
All right, then we'll do roll call. Terrell Bonds?
Yes.
Lloyd Fisher?
Yes.
Tom Sarah?
Yes.
Willie Miller?
Yes.
Sherman Wilson? And William Allen?
Yes.
We'll show by a vote of 6 to 0, the vice president is Terrell Bonds for 2025. Now that our two positions have been elected for the 2025 year, I relinquish my position as administrator and turn the meeting over to newly elected commission president, Tom Sarah.
Marco, thank you. It'll be a pleasure to serve this fine commission. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our January 16th, 2025 meeting. They're in front of us, us commission members. I need a motion to approve those minutes.
Mr. President, I move that the minutes be approved and accepted.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Okay, Willie?
We'll take roll call. Terrell Bonds?
Yes.
Lloyd Fisher?
Yes.
Tom Sarah?
Yes.
Sherman Wilson?
Yes.
Willie Miller?
Yes.
William Allen?
Yes.
So we'll show the minutes approved by a 6 to 0 vote.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to petition PC 2025-01, Dorothy King Street rename. The petitioner is David Collier King, and we look forward to the staff commentary.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Cory Sharp, serving at your pleasure. We have two honorary sign requests on your agenda, just by way of process. This is a sign that is not a formal street renaming. It's the brown sign that hangs underneath the street name, and it's an honorary designation. The city does have a policy. I'm just going to read the purpose of the policy for everyone's information. The purpose of this policy is to identify the guidelines underneath the new streets, which will receive names in honorarium. And this is a policy that goes before the Plan Commission first, and then it will go before the Board of Public Works, and the Board of Public Works is also a public meeting. It meets Wednesdays at 10 a.m. This first sign petition is in honorary naming of Dorothy King, and it is on near 15th Street and Maryland. In tab number two, you do have information around who Dorothy was and just a little bit of obituary, so to speak, of a community advocate. If the petitioner is here, we'd welcome their information, but this is a process that doesn't necessarily need my recommendation because it is an honorary sign, and it is not a public hearing, so we will not have open public comment on it either.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is David King, and if you would have told me a year ago I'd be here, I would not have believed you. I thought I had at least another 10, 20 years before I would have to do this. Dorothy King was my grandmother, and I gained my interest in politics. Many of you may remember me from my student council days and working here in the city of Gary. On the early morning of June 6th, 2012, I walked into City Hall as the first person to serve as mayor for the day under Karen Freeman-Wilson, and I received a call in the mayor's office from this older citizen who asked if I was busy and available for a meeting. And I sat back and I said, yeah, I'm available. So about 20, 30 minutes later, this about five foot four, five foot three woman comes walking through the door. She has on a black shirt, some sweatpants, and it's my grandmother. And I knew at that moment her wildest dreams had come true. She spent more than 40 years on the 15th and Maryland block where she held the position of precinct committee woman. She worked within the administration of Mayor Richard Gordon Hatchet, and she also served 10 years in the Gary assessor's office. And one of the things that I know about her legacy and her impact is that throughout my lifetime, there's no greater influence of a person who made me understand what I wanted to spend the rest of my life doing. At five years old, when I said I would be president, she was the first one to believe me. When I turned 18 and went off to college and said I wanted to go into politics, she was the first one who supported me. And when I recently got the approval for my first community development project that my company is doing over in Chicago where I live now, I knew that in heaven she was looking and smiling down and happy about the impact. But the one thing that I remember most about her is that she gave me the importance of community, especially about Gary, Indiana. She reminded me that Gary was not a city to be sold, but that if Gary were to be rebuilt, it would only be done through the power and collective impact of the people who have always called this place home. She brought people together from many different walks of life, and there was not a moment that I didn't have a chance to sit at the table with, sit on the couch, sit in her living room with people who came from across the spectrum of our community. And so today, as I speak about her legacy and I speak about her impact, I'm reminded that if I go through that community, the name Dorothy King means a lot to a lot of people. And so the first step of my family is to get this honorary designation for the street and then play our part in rebuilding that block to what she wanted it to be. She spent a lot of her time planting the flowers in the gardens and enlisting the work of her grandkids and children to maintain the lots and the different places on the block. And in the 1980s, they adopted the lot on the end of, the far end of, the far south end of the 1500 block of Maryland, where we hosted family reunions, we hosted block parties, we hosted national nights, not national nights out, so many other events and activities. And so I can't think, there's only one other person I can think of who, in my life, I believe deserves an honorary designation of this such. His name was Pastor Solomon Di, who was my great uncle. The next person is my grandmother, Dorothy King. So I would definitely appreciate your support in helping us to make this happen, as well as our future efforts and support to rebuild the 1500 block of Maryland street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any comments or questions from the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve PC 2025-01 as requested.
Mr. President, I move that we accept staff's favorable recommendation.
Okay, roll call, please.
Vice President Bonds?
Yes.
Member Fisher?
Yes.
President Sarah?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Allen?
Yes.
So we'll show by a vote of 6 to 0, favorable recommendation on the street rename, and it'll now go to the Board of Works for final approval.
Congratulations. All right, the next item on the agenda is PC 2025-06, LaMontrel McFarland Street rename, and the petitioner is Benay Thomas. Cory, comments?
Just by way of introduction, before Ms. Thomas gets up, this is a petition for Mississippi Street at 8th, 7th, and 6th Avenue, and the honorary name on the sign would be LaMontrel McFarland.
Hello, everyone. I'm Benay Thomas. I'm LaMontrel McFarland's mom. Never thought I'd be up here even asking for an honorary sign, because who wants to bury their child? Okay. I'll do my best. I'm speaking on behalf of our community. The people in group have expressed that we desire a special honorary sign in our east side area to honor LaMontrel. He's actually one of the founders in our neighborhood. He's been in the neighborhood for 42 years. We were born, that's where, you know, our family was raised, and that was our neighborhood. He basically, as a child, did a lot in the neighborhood for the older people. He loved his neighborhood. He basically, basically always took to the younger people and the older people in the community, okay? He always maintained a positive attitude, trying to inspire others to strive for their goals and to be a better version of theirselves. He was really a selfless person, okay? And family played a big part of his life. In his latest years, we actually developed a committee where we would start doing where we would start doing, you know, doing reunions where we would have back-to-school supplies, bouncy houses, you know, reunion for, reunions for the community, for the children, and the older people to enjoy theirselves. So we always organized that. The senior citizens would come out, play bingo, different games for the children. That just always put a smile on his face, you know? He just, he just loved our neighborhood. Even, like I said, as a child, helping out the precinct committing people and everything. He just loved the neighborhood. In his later years, him and some more of the, you know, other guys that grew up in the neighborhood, they put a committee together to start investing and to bring the neighborhood back up, because it went down, you know, vacant houses and all of that. So basically, that's the last project that we were working on. But he believed in supporting our community. Not only our neighborhood, but Gary in general. He just loved Gary, okay? And so I'm basically just asking you guys, well, I'm, you know, I'm sorry. I'm just asking that he be honored in our neighborhood that he grew up in, that he basically gave, he always gave back to our neighborhood, okay? That he be honored honorary sign. I'm not the best speaker, so you guys, I mean, I'm still, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You've done well.
Thank you.
Okay, any comments or questions from the commissioners? If not, looking for a motion to approve 2025-06 for the street rename?
I'll so move.
Okay, all right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion for acceptance of petition PC 2025-06.
All right, very good. So it's been, the motion's on the table, it's been seconded. Marco?
Vice President Bonds?
Yes.
A member Fisher?
Yes.
President Sarah?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
And member Allen?
Yes.
We'll show by a vote of six to zero. This has been approved, and we'll move on to the Board of Works for final approval.
There you go. Very good. All right, the next item on today's agenda is PC 2024-02/06. The description is 2227 to 29 Grant Street. It's a petition to rezone to PUD from R2/B3-1. The petitioner is Indiana Investment Properties LLC. The address is 2200 to 78 Lincoln Street in Gary. Cory?
PC 2402/26, as Mr. President mentioned, is petition to rezone to a PUD, which stands for Planned Unit Development. In the city's code, we allow petitioners to write their own code if the current code does not reflect all of the uses and criteria that they want to achieve on the site. So this petitioner has written their own code that is presented in your packet. The, from a comprehensive plan, land use standpoint, this is designated as an inactive school, which, of course, is not very helpful, because we don't want it to continue to be an inactive school. And as a side note, we will be updating our comprehensive plan this year as well. We did review proof of publication. All have been received, and it is complete. The public input to date, we had received a couple of letters and emails prior to 2/13, which have been included in your packet and published on the website. Within the last 24 hours, we have gotten three additional emails. If you would, they are in your packet. They're on the backside of this tab for your reference. If you would like, I'd be happy to read those into record for you. What would be your pleasure, Mr. President?
I think it'd be valuable for everyone here to, to be able to listen to them, so please read them into the minutes.
The first email is from Mr. John Allen. And the email reads, "I support the effort to develop Beckman School, and even if the specifics of the project must be modified to minimize truck traffic at a warehouse, the zoning should be approved. I ask that the following factors be weighed. One, the property tax revenue collected subsequent to the development and RE assessment of the property value. Two, the ability to get rid of a blighted eyesore of a large abandoned building that is there now. Three, the default beautification on the, of the grounds on the location from the development. Four, the default security and safety from the taking of abandoned hazardous looted building to a fenced commercial property. Five, the potential of the opportunity, sorry, the potential of the entry-level employment inherent with any warehouse for maintenance staff, security personnel, and forklift or logistics support. Six, the fact Beckman does not sit in a TIF district, thus considering the economic stance today of midtown, it is difficult to get private entities to risk their money, their money without any taxpayers buy, excuse me, without any taxpayers buy-in, this is crucial. Seven, the parcel has at least 40-plus empty of, or abandoned other parcels around it, missing from the tax rolls. In sum, if in fact the objections to approving the zoning from others are reasonable, I plead that the city ask and offer assistance in alternate locations. This is because our city government and certain segment of our population have made a grave error in our advocacy. We have more zeal invested into what we are against and never present or articulate policies and information to attract and implement what we are for." That concludes email number one. Email number two is a response by a community member to Mr. Allen's email. This is from Dorian Carey, the president of Gary Advocates for Responsible Development. It states, "Mr. Allen, it is possible, it is the position of the Gary Advocates for Responsible Development that trucking operations and other non-conforming uses should not be used for zoning changes in order to develop on former school properties such as Beckman, located in residential neighborhoods. Guard supports economic development in the city that prioritize community health, community health, and it's protective of our neighborhoods and natural resources. Please take a look at what happened at the closed Edison School Site, formerly zoned residential on the West 5th Avenue that was purchased by Juric Trucking. Community residents' concerns were raised regarding truck traffic, dust, noise, diesel fumes, and how Juric would screen adjacent homes from trucking operations. Juric made promises to screen homes from the truck operations, landscape the fence line, restrict truck parking to the north end of the property, and provide a traffic plan. As a result, the zoning change from residential was approved. The property is now overcrowded with trucks backed up to adjacent homes' front yards. Containers are stacked double high on the fence line. There is no protective screening or landscaping, and no traffic plan was submitted. The company has been informed of its failures to meet these promises made, but this operation in a residential neighborhood should have never been approved. There is a reason that zoning restrictions are put in place to protect resident health and neighborhood quality of life. Allowing trucking companies to locate in residential neighborhoods is detrimental to the safety and viability of neighborhood, of the neighborhood, and will not contribute to the sustainable development and redevelopment of Gary. Sincerely, Dorian Carey." That concludes the second email. The third email is from Gregory Henry. We received this yesterday. "My name is Gregory Henry, and I reside in the neighborhood of Alfred Beckman Middle School. I absolutely am in opposition of rezoning this area for a trucking and distribution business. Such a horrendous idea, and right across the street from St. Paul Baptist Church. Are you kidding me?" Exclamation point. That concludes the final. My final element of my staff presentation is a recommendation. The recommendation of staff is unfavorable towards this request due to it being uncharacteristic to the surrounding area. I've included in your packet a breakdown, and if you would allow me, Mr. President, I'll read through those breakdowns. In the code, section 123-60, Planned Unit Developments, there is specific criteria that any planned unit development needs to meet. So the first one that, the criteria is use exceptions. And the uses, the code states, "The uses permitted by exception are necessary or desirable and are appropriate with respect to the primary purpose of the development. In my review, the proposed PUD has been written to support warehouse and distribution activities primarily. A rezone is necessary to achieve these uses, given the current zoning and residential neighborhood, residential neighborhood character." The second item under use exceptions is "The uses permitted by the exception are not of a such neighbor nature or so located as to exercise a detrimental influence on the surrounding neighborhood. My review, the requested uses are uncharacteristics of a residential neighborhood or the small business commercial corridor of Grant Street. The property is only 0.5 miles from the 8094 intersection, which makes this site convenient for the proposed use. However, existing zoning along Grant Street corridor does not allow this type of use, and the areas immediately adjacent to Grant Street, the Grant Street's small business corridor, is single-family residential. Currently, trucking uses are located along the 8094 corridor south of 25th Street, which is a quarter mile from this site. Given the immediate proximity to single-family residential and small businesses, the requested uses would have detrimental influence on the surrounding neighborhood, leading to future sprawl of warehousing and distribution along this corridor, rather than condensing it to southwest Grant and 25th." The third item under use exceptions that this PUD needs to meet is that not more than 20% of the ground area or of the gross floor area of the proposed development shall be devoted to the uses permitted by the exception. The petitioner does meet this requirement if the requirement does not include trailer parking, which is a significant portion of the use need. If trailer parking is included in the calculation, then the request does exceed this 20% requirement. The fourth item under use exception is, "In a manufactured plan, manufacturing plan development, additional uses allowed by exception shall conform with the performance standards of the district in which the development is located as set forth in the code." If, if an underlying zoning district were established in this PUD, it actually would likely be M1, which means when you write a PUD, you oftentimes cite an existing underlying code, meaning this code gets pretty close to what we're trying to achieve, but we want to go over and above, beyond what that code says. So if this one had actually established an underlying district, it would be M1. M1 standards like sound levels, odor nuisance explosive, and maximum floor area ratios are not addressed in the language of this proposed PUD. The fifth item, fourth, fifth item is, "Uses permitted, provided for the implementation of sustainable growth principles and initiatives as approved by the commission." So the proposed PUD adopts environmental considerations for land disturbing activities, water quality, and IDAM approval. The PUD does not address green infrastructure strategies from the comprehensive plan, like bio swales, box tree filters, boulevard trees, permeable pavement, perforated pipe, stormwater planters, constructed wetlands, cisterns. There's still more, but I'll skip those. Then we move on to the criteria under bulk regulations. This is where you get into language around sustainable growth, your floor area ratio, your minimum lot size, and spacing between buildings. The first bulk regulation is that the PUD bulk regulation exceptions provide for the implementation of sustainable growth principles and initiatives as approved by the Plan Commission. The proposed language grants review and approval of drawings to the Site Plan Review Committee and the administrative approval for up to a 20% variation. The second one is, so to give you an example, if, if the fence height were within the front yard, the code, underlying code says that, you know, it has to be so far, 30 feet back. Well, this 20% variation would allow the administration to make, you know, adjustments to what that is as they go through. Would not have to come back before the commission. But it does need to go before the Site Plan Review Committee. The second one is, "The exception shall be solely for the purpose of promoting an integrated site plan, no less beneficial to the residents or occupants of the development, as well as the neighboring properties, than would obtain under a bulk regulations under this chapter for building developed on zoning lots." So the proposed graphics indicate a landscape area around the parking lots. The proposed text requires screening between six and 12-foot heights in various areas. Anything above six foot is not residential character as indicated in the comprehensive plan language. The PUD text allows for a 50-foot height building with an additional 25 foot for accessory units on the roof. The church building, in comparison, at the southwest corner of 23rd and Grant is a three-story structure, likely not exceeding 45 feet to the peak of the roof. This is the highest structure in the immediate area. Adjacent, single-family homes are one to two stories, not exceeding 30 feet in height. A proposed building of this height would likely not be beneficial to residents of neighborhood properties due to the incongruent height character. Third item is, "The overall floor area ratio of the development shall not exceed that prescribed in this chapter for the district in which it is located." The underlying zoning district, as I mentioned, is not proposed in this PUD language to determine the floor area ratio, nor is a maximum floor area ratio or size referenced in the document. The proposed language does state, "Open space shall be 12.5% square footage of the property." As defined in the PUD, open space does not include stormwater detention. Not knowing the size of that detention that's on, in your documents makes it hard to calculate what that hard surface area is. The site is 19 acres, and the plan that you all saw in September, the site plan shows nearly 70% or 13 acres of the total acreage being hard surface or under roof. The proposed building itself is 5.3 acres under roof. I, two more points. Spacing between principal buildings shall be at least equivalent to spacing required between similarly developed. So this petitioner is only proposing one building. So there's not, not two buildings. Then the final item is, "Along the periphery of the planned unit development, yards shall be provided as required by the regulations of the district in which the development is located." And in your PUD, the front side and rear yards are referenced in the proposed language. But they do not outline a required depth for each due to the lack of reference of an underlying, underlying district. And that concludes my report. I'm sorry for the length of it.
Cory, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Appreciate that. All right, as a reminder to the commissioners, the last time we were reviewing this petition, we left the public comment period open. So, pardon me? So it never opened up formally? Okay, then we are going to formally open the public comment period at this time. So people that signed up to speak for this, for this meeting and for this petition? I'm sorry?
Mr. President, the attorney was suggesting that maybe we should let the petitioner speak first.
Yes, okay. So yes, the public comment period is now open and the petitioner is welcome to speak Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Plan Commission. My name is Jim Weiser. I'm the attorney for the project. My offices are located on U.S. 30. If I might just take a quick point of personal privilege, I want to say to Mr. King that I happen to know her grandmother very well, being the chairman of the Democratic Party and having been involved in the party a long time, and she was an interesting lady and a fun lady to deal with, and I think it's wonderful that you all did that. It was a great, great honor and well-deserved. Going to try to do this in a more, kind of a different type of way in terms of presentation. I have with me our architects and planners, Carl and Paul Heitman. They're going to do the bulk of the presentation. I'm going to try to just do an overview to give our, our perspective since this has been, since the process has changed a little partly due to, to our faults in terms of inappropriate notice at times. I also have Christine Primbus with me, who's one of the principals of Indiana Investments. This is a petition to change property, as been previously stated, from zoning classification of R2 as a former school site, the Beckman School Site, to a planned unit development. I think since we heard a couple of remonstrances already, I would just point out that the two remonstrances, or two of the remonstrances that I heard were based on a comparison to a trucking firm, which is an absolutely invalid and inappropriate comparison. This isn't a trucking firm. This isn't a trucking center. This has nothing to do other than obviously, trucking would be involved in transport of materials, but it isn't a trucking site at all. And I just want to clarify that. But here's what I want to say. Look, this site's been, this site has been vacant for 20 years or approximately 20 years. And I suspect that if our petition isn't approved, it will be vacant for a substantially longer period of time, not longer than 20 years, but certainly longer. They're not school sites in any community that have been abandoned, are not easy sites to, to develop, primarily because most every zoning ordinance I'm familiar with in northwest Indiana always, schools are placed and given a residential zoning classification. That's their, that's the classification they're historically given. And in this day and age of hopefully rebuilding and renovation and redevelopment, we can be, we try to look at it from a much larger perspective in terms of helping and developing the community. So we're here and all of us, whether it's myself, the folks I represent, or the remonstrators, we're all here in good faith. Everybody has their opinion and everybody has their belief about what's the appropriate use, A, of this property? And is it appropriate to, to place a use on it that isn't a, obviously, a residential use, but is a use that fits the characteristics of that community? And I'll get to that in a second. The, the remonstrators feel otherwise and they have, and their concerns are legitimate. I'm not here to, to, I know that they believe in their concerns like we believe in our development and, and we all understand that. But if you take a look at where that property is located, and I understand the description that's been previously submitted by Corey relative to Grant Street and the characteristics and the character of Grant Street, but the fact of the matter is Grant Street is a designated truck route in the city of Gary and has been for many years. And this location, if you look at it from an economic development perspective, is incredibly well-suited for the purpose for which we are petitioning. It's right off of Grant Street, maybe a half a block off, off of Grant Street. Access, as was previously pointed out, to I-80 and I-94 is extremely close and, and would not be, the type of traffic that we would generate would, in our opinion, not harm or negatively impact the surrounding community. It's our belief that, that Gary needs to develop and, and we know that you all believe in that and we all do too. And we believe that sometimes you have to think a little bit out of the box and you have to look at it from a different perspective because it's had an opportunity for many, many years to develop in a, in a R2 residential classification, and it hasn't. And I don't profess to be an expert. Corey's an expert in development. I'm, I'm the lawyer and I know enough about it or believe enough about it to think that it's highly unlikely that that site is ever going to develop as residential, just highly unlikely, despite what the best efforts and the best good faith efforts of the community and the city. So we're left with what can we do? What can we do to make it economically viable and still try to do it and comply with or at least address concerns regarding the environment and other issues that the, that the remonstrators have raised? And that's what we, that's what we're attempting to do today. That's what the presentation you're about to see is attempting to do today, to, to bring in economic development, to create jobs, to not seek one dime in, in tax return, and to increase assessed valuation of the property to benefit the community at large. That's our perspective. Understand that there's folks here that feel differently. I mean, that's what it's all about. And that's what you all ultimately end up deciding when you make your recommendation to forward this matter, either favorable or unfavorable, to the city council. So having said all that and kind of having set the table, I'd like to and will at this time turn it over to our architects who have a PowerPoint presentation prepared. We didn't want to take all day to present this to you. We could spend a long, long time doing it, but we believe that we've condensed our presentation to, to enough so that we could convince you, hopefully convince you, that it's the appropriate thing to do for this parcel of property in this particular area of the community. So having said that, I thank you for allowing me to make the beginning of the presentation and I'll have, I assume Carl, are you going to be coming up? Yeah, Carl Heitman will be making the formal presentation to you at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiser. Please state your name and your address, please.
Thank you, Jim. My name is Carl Heitman. I'm president, founder of Heitman Architects. We're in Illinois, Itasca, Illinois, and I've been in business for 33 years and I'm primarily a planner and architect of industrial facilities. We call them corporate industrial facilities. We work across the nation and we work for a lot of Fortune 100 and Fortune 500 companies. If you'd put the slides show up, I had a, we've been working on this for about two years on different capacities and I took a 50 slide show down to 25, so I'll try to be really brief and move forward. But it's a request for rezone from R2 to a planned unit development. Talked about, it's going to be called 23rd and Grant Commerce Center. And in regards to the PUD, the PUD just is an ability to develop this site for uses that don't conform with R2, but we plan this site to conform with M1 zoning. Next slide, please. So the petitioners, as we discussed, Indiana Investment Properties, Kyle Glasscott and Ms. Primbus, Ms. Primbus is here. Mr. Glasscott was unable to make it due to a family emergency that I found out yesterday, so I kind of moved into the speaking position. We just heard from Mr. Jim Weiser of Legal. And with me is Paul Heitman, who has done a lot of planning on the site too, so Paul may want to speak as we go through this. Next slide. So we wanted to do a quick agenda. We're going to talk about the location and context of the specific site. We're going to talk about the basis for rezoning, its request, and it's creating community value, we feel. Potential development plans and envisioning the future. The plan you're going to see is just a concept plan that we put together to aid this discussion. In the PUD process, the applicant will actually come back with, with a plan that you'll be able to look at and review and approve or disapprove in the future. We'll talk about the evaluation criteria. We have some summary slides of what we've discussed with the public in the past and we have some information and feedback that we receive from staff. Next slide, please. So this slide might be hard to see, but the site is a very unique site in the map of the Gary and also the greater Indiana-Chicago region. It's a site that sits between two major interstates and it is a truck route. Next slide, please. So in this slide, it shows you that between 94 and 90, Grant Road is that black arrow that connects the two. There's a star, a green star, which basically puts it on the site and you can see a pink star on the north and a pink star on the south, and those are two light industrial districts that this Grant Road is strategic in connecting those two industrial districts. So this property would be key to serving the existing industry that you have in the Gary area. Next slide. Current conditions, we talked about the school. It's been vacant for 20 years and really it's rundown. I went through it, took a lot of photos and it's, it's pretty much a dangerous condition. Next slide, please. Economic drivers. So the Indiana business climate is positive and there's demand that's driving the need for economic revitalization. This is an opportunity to activate a vacant property, underutilized land along a major corridor that has high visibility and access between those two key industrial sectors in your city. The need for employment centers and commercial manufacturing tax base is a real concern. It will increase the jobs in the tax base and it will support your existing and future housing. So regional market and demand for office, distribution, light assembly, and advanced manufacturing is what we're seeing in the market. We're in a unique time where we're looking at bringing back onshoring manufacturing and creating uses that basically went away last 30 years or 40 years and we're hoping that they come back. Gary, Indiana, Chicago region is ideally positioned for that because we're at the center of the country, we're the center of highways and railroads and air traffic. It's, it's a great place to see a rebirth, rejuvenization. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit our firm. We do manufacturing buildings. We, we have a tag, "We Design Buildings That Work," and really these are corporate buildings that include light, industrial, and assembly, distribution functions, but it's not a truck facility, as Jim said. A trucking facility might be a cross-dock facility, 100-foot wide, there's a lot of truck activity. They're moving product in and out at very short term. This would not be that kind of facility. It's not designed that way. It's a deeper facility. It's got just a single-loaded dock and we've created a very constricted truck flow that wouldn't allow for a trucking facility to be there. Next slide. What we found in our work is industrial, industrial's not a dirty word. And we do a lot of clean buildings. There's a lot of clean manufacturing. This is a building that we completed in the Pullman District in South Chicago. It's right off of 94 and 110th. And this was the first LEED Platinum facility in the U.S. LEED is Leadership in Environmental and Energy Design. And our firm was distinguished with a global award for this building. It's a Cornet Global Award in 2016. This building accomplishes a triple bottom line. So industrial today is really looking at environmental concerns, economic rejuvenization and social rejuvenization. This building is for Method Soaps and Method Soap is an environmentally correct soap. It was a Ryerson Steel site that had been sitting vacant for 40 years. It was tainted. We cleaned it up and we put in a really high performing, very energy efficient and environmentally sound building. But what it did also is it changed the community. It created a job base. Adam Lowery, the founder of Method, decided he'd come back to Chicago. He grew up in Detroit. We looked for sites in Detroit and Chicago. He picked this one because he asked me, "What's beyond LEED? What's beyond LEED Platinum?" And we said regenerative buildings and that means regenerating and rejuvenating communities. There was a fence, razor wire fence to 10-foot around the site. He said, "We're taking the fences down and we're hiring people from the neighborhood." He hired 400 people from the neighborhood and there's no fences. And that way he really rejuvenated and reactivated that community in Pullman. Next slide. This is an image of the concept building we've got planned for the Grant Commerce Center. It's not an ugly building. It's not a dirty word. It's, it's a very attractive building. The height of it's about 44 feet and it has a front that would serve the community in terms of new jobs, incubators maybe for local companies, but it does achieve the triple bottom line. It's going to protect the environment. It was mentioned about bioswales and all that is part of our developments today because it's basically makes sense. It's more economic and it, it really works for the community. The social aspect is very important because it's creating jobs. Gary, Indiana was founded on industrial. It's not a dirty word. Industrial has fortunately moved away, but I think it's going to come back. And this unique site gives you the opportunity to rebuild and reestablish that. Two years ago, we went out and did some community work and we saw community support at that time. Next slide. So basis for rezone application. We want a planned unit development to support local jobs, local business uses, office distribution uses, advanced manufacturing, light assembly. So a lot of the, a lot of the industrial today is not low wage, low skill. It's high wage, high skill because you're automating a lot of what's going on inside. It's high-tech automation inside. It's not a cross-dock truck terminal and it's not a truck yard. Next steps, we need to really go through this process to get you to recommend a PUD process to the board. And once they approve it, then we look at being able to develop the site, develop it with a, a developer that would come in and pick it up and they would be before you again. It's not the last time you see it. It'll come back before you again with their plan and their, and their requirements. We base it on M1 zoning, so we feel like we're in conformance to M1 zoning with what we have. It's not like we're creating something new. And we think it's consistent with the comprehensive plan that I think's kind of in flux, but the city will be remaining in control of the process and the property. So it's not like you're letting go of the control. You're, you're able to steer it. The PUD process is a great process to allow you to steer, to get what you want on that site. And the owner, developer will have a clear path forward. In, in order to make this site developable, a developer coming in to make an investment in your community has to understand that there is a path forward and you're basically opening the door for that path through a PUD process. You're not losing control. You're just opening that process to create a viable You're not losing control, you're just opening that process to create a viable tax-generating business or series of businesses on that site. Next slide. So, our site plan is set up here. There is detention on the north side, that dark green would be a detention area that gives a really large buffer to the church to the north that was mentioned. Our trucks will enter the street to the north, which is, what, 22nd Street? And trucks enter and exit 22nd Street. 23rd Street, which is on the bottom of the page, is only for automobiles, exclusive for automobiles. So, you as commissioners can control that and make sure that the PUD is developed that way. So, that puts automobiles on basically the residential side. Next slide. This is enlarged, so the red arrow at the top on 22nd Street is where the trucks enter and exit, so they're entering and exit the same way. The side roads that connect down to 23rd are simply emergency vehicle access, it's required to keep us safe from harm. So, no trucks on those side roads, the trucks are only on that, what's the east side of the site, plan north. Plenty of parking along the 23rd, and we've created a buffer, as was mentioned, a landscape buffer, and we're looking at really giving that buffer back to the community and creating maybe public spaces and more of a pedestrian scale along 23rd Street. Next slide. Again, here's the plan up above, shows that it could be split up in as many as six incubator businesses, could be providing jobs for local, your local residents, and it could also foster local businesses. Or it could be at least 100% or 50%. So, the building is basically a very flexible building that will allow for the best attraction to businesses that would want to invest into your community. Next slide. Again, that's the elevation, the full length of it. It is scaled with a lot of lower-height elements. You can see some canopies that are more on the residential scale in those colored walls that are more on the home scale, and then the white is kind of disappearing. So, we're really trying to diminish the scale of the building. Next slide. So, the M1 zoning requirements, including but not limited, have been met. So, we're meeting the minimum yards and setbacks, or the front yard, side yard, rear yards. Our open space is greater than the minimum, it's at 12.5%. More open space and require, I think it's at 20%, so we're at 12. Loading bursts are greater than 100-foot of adjacent residential districts. Our loading bursts are way on the other side of the homes. Additional PUD provisions, including but not limited to the maximum building height at 50, we think will be well under 50. Earth and berms as part of the streetscape along 23rd have been provided, and detention has been provided. Next slide, please. This is a concept rendering of the building from the air. This has no roof on it, so you can see the, it's a very big, open space that allows for a lot of flexibility, be very attractive to many number of businesses, and that they could be subdivided as many as six tenants within the building easily, the way it's set up. This shows you also along the 23rd at the bottom of the page, the setback. We've got a series of landscape treatments which would create what we call little pocket parks along the 23rd, and those trees, you can see those three trees and then a space through. Those actually relate to the streets that run in perpendicular to the site and also the homes. So, there's the ability to have a garden or private space in between those trees, and with ornamental fencing and solid fencing will create a much more interesting, undulating streetscape. And again, we're putting that onto the public side. Next slide. We were trying to give it to the public. So, that's a picture of the rendering again. We've got some stone features and some wood features on the building with a wood canopy. So, it's, I think it's going to be a fairly attractive addition to the neighborhood. Next slide. These are the elevations that were in your packet, all four sides. Next slide. This is beginning to describe what's going along 23rd with the undulating landscape treatments that kind of align with the streets and the alleyways. Next slide. This was what might look down the streetscape, and that wall, this was an earlier concept where we were creating garden areas that would be basically food production gardens that could be owned by or used by the community members on that block. So, we've shown some tags on the wall. This is just a concept where people could personalize it. Next slide. So, the process, as I understand it, is we hopefully will get an approval to rezon from R2 to a PUD. We're looking for the Plan Commission here to make recommendations to the board, and based on this conceptual site plan, the rationale to rezone, developer commitments that will come in, and city will remain in control. As you go through the PUD process, it comes back to you, and you get to approve it for a final, following council approval, it will return to Plan Commission for the preliminary and final plan approvals, and then it will have a final site plan approval prior to permit and construction. So, this is really the first step in getting a developer to invest in the community. And, next slide, please. Next slide. So, comments received from the Plan Commission members. Need for additional public outreach, we understand that, and we're in the process of doing that. Project location with the 5th District and Edge. With the 4th District, both council persons need to be directly engaged, we understand that, we will support that. Transportation infrastructure requirements require further review by city staff, that's a given. Additional mitigation triggers may be required for plat approval, we understand that, it's just the beginning of the process. And need for an updated PUD ordinance in the future. I think that's what we're going to maybe collectively work with your staff on. Next slide, please. Questions received from the Plan Commission members. Is it a specific development investor on board? If not, has there been a serious interest expressed by the development community? Yes, the original development partner is Dayton Street Properties. They've taken a step back, waiting to see how this process will unfold, but we do have other interested parties that are interested in this key property, key opportunity to revitalize Gary's center. Next question is, "A petitioner rezoned is successful. Is there an estimate for how long it would be before permitting and construction were able to commence?" A proposed timeline was provided in the packet, so it's just a start. It would probably be on the order of one and a half years to two years before anything got in the ground. Next slide, please. Next slide. More questions, concerns about the potential conflict, unhealthy competition with other important developments, ready for activation specifically to the Gary Commerce Center, former Lake Sand Joe property. We feel that, the short answer to this is, it does not negatively affect those, it actually will help those, it takes the burden off and the lift off of getting those more difficult, complex projects started. And it's like an auto mall or a food court, you know, when you have more than one businesses, it starts to create a synergy and would be the catalyst to create reburgeoning businesses in that quarter. The 23rd and Grant PUD may spurt interest in the Gary Common Center project, it's kind of what I just talked about. So, next slide, please. I guess that's it. So, appreciate your consideration, and we know this is the first step, and it's an important step, and it really could become the seed to start that redevelopment of viable industry back in Gary, Indiana. I think the time is right now, you're seeing a lot happening with the supply chain and the bringing onshoring or reshoring or friendshoring back to the states. And again, Gary is uniquely positioned, more than any other city in the country, because you're at the center of the country, and you're at the center of the transportation districts, and you're right near the auto, the mining, the farm industry, it's all around here, and that's why Gary developed the way it did, because of its geographic location. It's right, and the time is right to get that started again. So, thank you very much.
All right. Does the petitioner have any other people that wish to speak?
No.
You do not? Okay, thanks, Jim. All right, we're going to open this to the public, if you haven't, anybody that has signed in. Just to respect everybody in the room, we're going to limit it to two minutes each, so please consider that. And anybody who wishes to speak, you're welcome, please state your name and your address, and then your comments.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Teresa Woodard, and I live 2156 Lincoln Street. There's a verse that comes to me, and it says, "My people will live in peaceful dwelling places, in secure homes, in undisturbed places of rest." Oh, can you hear me now? Okay, I'll start over. Teresa Woodard, 2156 Lincoln Street, Gary, Indiana. Just something that comes to mind, "My people will live in peaceful dwelling places, in secure homes, in undisturbed places of rest." I live on the north side of Beckman School. I live 400 feet from 22nd Avenue. I'm not interested, nor are my neighbors interested, in large diesel trucks rumbling through the neighborhood, shaking the homes and polluting the air, and I have concerns around waste management, transportation operations, and maintenance. We are already burdened with U.S. Steel Works plants, emissions. As you know, we have all heard, because we've been here like three weeks or so, three months, actually, trucks are some of the worst offenders when it comes to vehicles and emission, also destroying the character of the neighborhood. Okay, I've got a couple of points, and I'll be back to my seat. The creation of trucks and the overall project will change the existing road capacity in our neighborhood, creating more congestion and safety issues. My next point, this project will make it harder to access essential goods and services for people. For instance, churches, I can walk to four churches in 10 minutes and drive to them both, all four of them, in at least five minutes. Healthcare, they are in the process of remodeling the medical center on 22nd Avenue and Grant Street, and it is a major route to the only hospital in the city. My next point is, one of the city's major pharmacies, grocery stores in our city, and there are a few gas stations on Grant Street as well. Delays also, they intensify other negative impacts, like vehicle activities, like emissions and air pollution. The flow of those trucks and the project and the people, and you flow those trucks and this project in our neighborhood, and the people will start to avoid the area. I've got two seconds. It's more than, it's more than an empty school with ample space for your project, sirs. It's a neighborhood, and it's where we live.
Please, name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Bruce Curry. I have, my family has six lots adjacent to Beckman School, a beauty shop there, and the points I want to make is just this, and to the petitioners, to the city of, citizens of Gary, you know, I've seen enough where development, far as trucking and that, is on the other side of the road. There's this, I really think groups wanting to come on the other side is undermining the board here by going from a R2 to B3 to a PUD. A PUD, you can just basically do anything. I was president of real estate for Johnson &amp; Johnson for like 27 years, and I also handled facilities, I built pharmaceutical sites. This type of project, like I saw, it was a great drawing and everything. Don't want to run any economic development away from Gary, but needs to be on the other side of the road. You've got the village sitting there, it looks just like the village, but it's not developed, you've already got a parking lot there. Why would you want to take the residential area? And it needs to maintain, because right now, you only got two major streets in Gary, Broadway and Grant. We already see what the development has done for Burr. It's $38 million coming in to the city of Gary. I want to see 38 million. You look, go north, and you see a lake. Why would you put development like that? Everybody wants to get push-in on the lake. To me, this is environmental racism, and it needs to stop, because I know a lot of people wouldn't want that in their neighborhood if it's close to a lake. Lake, this is the body of water cleanest in the country. Does this match, I ask the question, does this match to the city's master plan for growth for Gary? Because right now, Steel Mill went from 50,000 employees down to 2,500. There's going to be people move back in, so you need this property for your growth plan. I'm sorry going over a few minutes, but I like to not let people come in to the city of Gary, undermine the zoning and laws and petitions we have. I want you to just refuse this request, but I want them to look at somewhere else. There's all kind of other land around Gary, not that land. I mean, we're talking a major city, a major street, Grant, Burr, Broadway. Hands-off, people. That's all I said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, name and address, two minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Terry Martin. I reside at 2461 Grant Street in the city of Gary. Just very briefly, I was up before, and I gave comments about how we feel as neighbors in the area, the fact that the notice was flawed to begin with. We were told at the last meeting when we were here that there would be a community meeting to talk with the residents at First Baptist Church on the 5th of February. That was canceled. We had no notice that it was canceled, and we have no hearing that there is another one scheduled to get us involved. I want to stipulate to everything that Director Cory Sharp has said, she's been very helpful and very informative, and kudos to her for that wonderful, detailed report. This is all about economics. It's all about the money versus how the people feel and how we're going to reside in that community. I represent the block club, I represent 106-year-old native of that area that still lives there in her home, and we don't want this. This is our neighborhood. This is our neighborhood. I looked at the schematics of what was presented here. Beautiful, a lot of brick and mortar, but I saw no homes around those drawings, no homes, no, nothing that looked residential around that. It looked like it was sitting apart in a commercial setting, which is where this should be. The other thing was that, you know, we look at the fact that it's been residential, and nobody's done anything with it, there's been nothing, it's blighted. We stipulate to all of that. Do you think we not know what's around us? We know what we see as we come from home, go back and forth from home to work every day. But, by the same token, no one, we're not developers, we're residents. We don't have the capital to pull developers in. No one has given us an opportunity to sit down with us and say, "What are some other proposed uses for this area?" We have the means and the monies and the grant, all the, we don't, but the city and everybody else does have the opportunity to bring those developers here. Give us some options. What are some other proposed uses? We've been down this road before, a couple of years back with Larry Webb, and it was voted down then. I would ask this board, if you would follow that same precedent, vote it down, and I hope that it follows through with the city council, that they will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners, President.
Good afternoon, commissioners, President. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I really want to just support what the community residents have said about their neighborhood.
Ms. Carey, please name and address for the record.
Sorry, Doreen Carey, 7304 Indian Boundary, Gary. I want to support the residents who live right around the area and it's so important what Ms. Martin said about, let's have an opportunity for the community to have some input here. I know that the comprehensive plan is being redeveloped by the city. There's going to be a new comprehensive plan, I think by June of this year. And also, what? Okay, something like that. And then, the zoning code is being reviewed. I would take this opportunity to support what the planner, Ms. Cory Sharp, has said. Don't allow this to come through right now. Don't make this change now. The city is going to have an opportunity to look at these areas, to make decisions about what the former schools should be, instead of just doing it piecemeal without the plan of the current administration to say, "What is it? Yeah, we have great opportunities now. Let's not go backward and allow us to utilize the properties that would probably benefit the community more if it were more residential." We need more residents. We want to attract more residents. We're likely to get more residents when we have our downtown developed, when we, excuse me, you know, have our Broadway plan. I think that, and we have the South Shore, which is going to bring more people here that will want to live in the city and have a residential community, not a piecemeal, you know, commercial, residential. That's why we have zoning, to protect people from that. So, thank you very much and that I would certainly oppose this at this point in time and support the suggestion of your planner. Thank you.
Thank you.[726.32][726.32](APPLAUSE). Okay, name and address.
Good evening. Quavino Marzulli, 6th District, Mississippi Street. The district, of course, I'm not in the district, but this affects the whole city because if they do it here, they'll do it somewhere else. We have a lot of abandoned schools and abandoned properties in neighborhoods. Part of my work requires that I assess property. Just got back from Detroit, Rockford, Illinois, also Frankfurt, Indiana, communities assessing light industrial, industrial, and storage buildings. Not one of them, not one was in a residential neighborhood. So, we just wanted people to keep that in mind. We like it, the proposal looked pretty nice, but don't do it there. People do not want that in our community, we don't need that in our community. It opens up the portal again to do it in other areas. Grant Street, when you go south off the Borman, there's truck stops there, so a lot of trucks go right to the truck stops. North on Grant, not as many, not many at all, really, actually, not a lot. This again opens up the portal to a lot more trucks coming up. There was a meeting I watched online probably about a year ago and there was a company, a trucking company that was in Crown Point and Gary. The people in Crown Point, this is what the guy said, the petitioner said, he said, "The people in Crown Point are complaining about this traffic, they don't really want us here. We're going to close Crown Point and move the operation, our full operation, to Gary." And they did. It's over by the, across from the post office, not really in a residential neighborhood, but, that's what they did, but the people in Crown Point, they didn't want that either. So, what's good for them is good for us. Thank you.
Thank you.[840.88][840.88](APPLAUSE).
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Carolyn McCready. I live at 8241 Locust Avenue. Something that the architect said disturbed me when he said that on this property, these 19 acres, no one would ever, ever, ever build housing. I don't know how he knows that and I find it a really outrageous statement that no one would ever consider by building housing in an area that's already residential. And so, I think that to, the gist of what he said basically was that, you know, it's that whole thing about, "We know you're desperate." You know, "We, we know you can't get what you want, so you better take what we're offering." And, you know, we're really tired of hearing that, really, really tired of hearing that and we're really counting on, on the U-Board members to, to not allow this project to go forward. I mean, the, your Plan Director has already said that, that they are out of line in, in most of what they have proposed with what the PUD requires. And you've heard the community, you've heard one clap for the architect's plan. And, and also, I'd like to say, you know, this is just the beginning. He said, "Well, this just opens the door. There's no guarantee that this kind of development would even happen." So, I just think it's kind of smoke and mirrors. I don't know exactly what they're up to, but it doesn't sound to me like it makes us, any kind of sound economic sense and it's also disrespectful. Thank you.[959.94][959.94](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Carolyn.
David King again here, Indiana Avenue. I'm Chicago, Gary native though. Stand here mustering the courage of my grandmother. And in alignment of the honorary sign designations that you all received today, I think the theme is community. And I have always been a very big advocate and believer that Gary can make a huge comeback. But I also understand that that happens when the voices of those who are in that community, those who have dedicated their lives, built their families, their careers there, or considered, their voices are heard. I worked for the Department of Planning and Development in Cook County and previously worked on the Department of Planning and Development over in Chicago. And I've had the chance to work on several citywide plans, comprehensive plans, supported projects. And one of the things I'm always afraid of is seeing developments like this erected in neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods. That's challenging because people lose community, people lose the, the opportunity for them to then engage in the economic development of their own community, which I believe is key and central at any point for at least a city like Gary. I've studied several cities in preparations for different plans and things of that nature. One of the key driving components to what carries a community forward is local regenerative neighborhood economics. This ability for people to be able to find how their dollar recirculates in their community and how they can play a role in making that happen. So, I know that the attorney did say that my grandmother was a great friend and I hate to stand opposed, but I have to, I have to muster her spirit today simply because I do believe that housing can be developed there. I do believe that community businesses and complexes can be developed there in a way that best benefits the people. And so, I encourage this board in alignment with the honorary designations that you've approved today for the heart and the theme of community. For someone like me who wants to come back and play a role in helping develop and helping these community members develop, please vote this down and give the people a voice to be able to develop the city of Gary into a community of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.[1130.15][1130.15](APPLAUSE).
My name is Councilman Deion Washington, at-large member of the Gary Economic Council and also chairman of the Planning and Development Committee, which more than likely, whatever your vote is, will come before this committee. I'm not against major economic development for the city because it is needed. But as you all well know, you're working on a plan to ensure that this city is structured, Mr. Barnes, as we've had conversations, that this city is structured in a way from a planning perspective that we have the right and the correct development in the locations throughout our six districts. I want to thank Cory Sharp and the administration for her due diligence because she comes to the table with a wealth of knowledge. There are a lot of things that have not been done correctly regarding zoning and planning in the past. She is diligently trying to right the track in ensuring as this table is developed that things are planned accordingly. So, at this time, I would have to agree with the administration's standpoint of saying no to this development at this time. And this is why it's a few things. I want to give you some history because about two years ago, under the Jerome Prince administration, there was a forum at Roosevelt Park Pavilion and the president, who's a very nice lady, came and they did a presentation. She didn't say much, but they had representatives that was there. Linda Barnes Caldwell hosted it. Having spoken with her about this development, but this is kind of new to myself and probably to other council members that this is back on the table. But what I do remember from that last public forum is that I specifically asked Commissioner Miller to have, to have the opportunity to go to different sites, to be able to look at the different facilities. And I gave my name to a representative and I did not receive a call back about being able to go and look at the site personally, myself. I had a concern with that because I reached out and before saying no, I wanted to be able to look at the site and look what it is. I have a background in real estate investment trusts. Several of the community members from the 5th District called me airing their concerns, but they also, one of them that's here today, wanted to also travel along with me and others and have a delegation to go and look at some of the other properties. We never received a concern about that, a call back about that. There are some concerns with the location because right now, not due to this administration, but Edison School, right now, that Drurek Trucking Company is currently at, I wasn't on the council, many of you probably was not here, but at the end of the day, Drurek Trucking Company is at a school, a ex-school, Edison School. And what we've been told is that commitments regarding the surrounding areas of that community and promises made have not been committed, have not been kept. And so, I reached out to Ms. Sharp because we need to look at Drurek and some of the promises they made because that's in my district, the second district also. The second is we look at Kitchen Delights that bought Pulaski School. So, this is another problem that we're going to have to look at and I know Ms. Sharp and the administration is doing this, but there needs to be a collaboration with the Gary Community School Corporation because they sold Pulaski School. They sold it to Country Delights. And I want to go back to what somebody else said, I think it was Ms. Carey. I was on the school board at the time when Larry Webb bought the property at the school and Larry Webb was told by the school board that if you buy this school district, you must go before the common council to be able to change the zoning to be able to operate that facility. And we recommended that him not to buy it, but the district, as you know, needs money. So, we sold it. He failed in getting the proper zoning that he needed for that. And so, that is something also that Kitchen Delights is going to have to deal with. But the further question is that the multitude of abandoned schools that we have in this city, there needs to be a coming together, the planning commission, the mayor and Cory and the council to look at how we can dispose of these properties, but also maintain the respect and integrity of the school while also maintaining the integrity of the area that is surrounding where people currently live. So, that is another concern that's going to come up in the near future that you all are going to have to make a decision. But most importantly, the city council members are going to have to, have to make that decision. There are not, to the presentation, there are not just two council members that represent that district, four and five. You have three at-large members. I represent every district in this community. So, you literally have five council people who are responsible for that district. And so, right now, again, I would ask that this be voted down. It's going to come before us anyway, but I want this company to have an opportunity to work with Ms. Sharp and the administration on looking at alternative sites. We know as a city, we have about 8,000-plus properties that we own and I really believe with, with working together, because I believe the businesses they're bringing to the table is needed in a community. I don't think there's any ill intent, but where it's going to be placed, I think because of lack of communication between the past administration and trying to speedily put this together for a new administration that's wrapping their head around how to bring a successful planning, development in this community is really soon. And so, I'm hoping that the current administration with Ms. Sharp, we can get redevelopment because we have those properties, sit down with this company and try to figure out if there is another location that will be more conducive for them to build this company because I'm going to tell you, this is the future. This is a great model for us to have and I think that we need to open the idea of understanding of being able to have economic development, having anchors that can get other businesses to come to the area. I just think right now, it's the, it's the wrong location at this time. The other concern because of the area that it's in, just like with Drurek, potentially with Country Kitchens, is the potential environmental problems that we will have in that area. Okay? And see, a lot of people really don't think about environmental problems when it comes to an area, but what you breathe, what our children breathe, what our elderly people breathe, the groundwater, everything that can be tagged to it, we never think about that because we look at the financial impact, we look at the jobs, we look at other things. But the environmental factors can harm future generations and present generations going into the future. So, again, I stand wholeheartedly with Ms. Sharp and the administration on denying this at this time. What we're hoping before it becomes, before it comes to the council, and it is a sign that the company and the administration can work together and hopefully, hoping to find a solution by looking at a vast number of properties, making sure that it is in a location that will be properly zoned based on your plan and that we can move forward because I think this company brings a lot of opportunity to the city and I believe it's worth us working together with them to do that. It's just, you ever heard the, the saying, "The wrong thing at the right time"? That's what this is, the wrong thing at the right time. The right time is we need the development, but it's in the wrong location. But this company brings a lot to the table from their past and I will speak publicly right now again and I will say to the people, I am still open to having people go and look at your locations because when that was asked at a, at a future date, we weren't given that opportunity. I would like to see and talk to other residents and other people that's in that area of what kind of impact their buildings and their, their construction has had on their surrounding community. And it would be great that if it's brought other economic development, if it's brought other development, that's something that we as a community need to look at because we don't want to just say no and this could be an anchor to greater things coming. And then, on the other side, we might hear something negative to say, "Hey, it's not environmentally sound. It has done a bad thing far as traffic." Whatever it is, I think that the company should work with the administration on a delegation to be able to go look at that so the administration can actually see if this is something that they really want to do. I thank you for allowing me to overstep my boundaries in my time today. God bless you.[1701.13][1701.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Councilman Washington. Any other speakers? Okay, if not, then I'm going to call the public portion of this, this, this petition closed. Are there any comments or questions from the, my fellow commissioners?
Mr. President, I just have one question to the petitioner. It doesn't have to be long. Throughout the presentation, as well as your verbal presentation, it was stated that the city remains in, would remain in control. My question is how? The property is privately owned right now, correct? Somebody want to come up?
Thank you for your question. My understanding is in the PUD process, you will have the opportunity to review in detail an application that comes before you. The PUD just sets some guidelines, some rough guidelines and our plan is really informational. I think it would be a good plan, but you know, it's still up to a petition to follow.
Okay, so then, control in the sense of conditions, conditional approvals while in the hands of
Exactly.
The plan commission as well as the council, but not in control in perpetuity? Is that correct?
It would be in control of the use. It would be in control of the use and the specific design, the setbacks, the landscape, that sort of thing, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yeah, I was just going to add to that, so, to further clarify, so I know I heard the comment.
I'm sorry, you have to state your name.
Sure, Paul Heitman, Heitman Architects. I live at 942 Little Falls Court in Elk Grove Village. Elk Grove Village borders O'Hare, it's got the largest industrial park in the, in the, in the country, and I also live within a court, within a half mile to a major interchange. Between me and the interchange is also a development three times this, and the truck traffic that accesses that development does not drive through my neighborhood, they drive through those buildings and they get back onto the interstate. But I just wanted to clarify on that for everybody's understanding. For instance, if 50 feet was a deal breaker, and the, the city and the residents wanted to see 40 feet, then that's something we would define during that PUD process. Other things like the setbacks, those are, these are some of the largest setbacks on the front and backyard that we design. On the front yard, you have 142 feet to the building, and then you have a 66 to 88-foot right away. So, you have, from the front of the building to the residence on the south, you have about two-thirds of a football field between the building and the residence. So, I just wanted to clarify for everybody's understanding, if you wanted to change some of those requirements like setbacks, building height during the PUD, PUD process, then we would, we would develop that, and then if, if another deal did come in that wanted to change those rules, it would have to go through a similar process like this to change those constraints. So, I just want to clarify that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other comments from the commissioners?
One, if you like. Did you want to make a statement first?
Okay, just for fellow commissioners here, we have a, I would accept a motion to favorably recommend 2025-07 as, excuse me, 06 as requested, or a motion to recommend denial for request
Mr. President?
Do you have a comment?
I do, I do.
Okay, please.
I did have a question about the public meeting that was to take place, that I wanted to clarify, was there a makeup meeting or something in relationship to that?
I think you're talking about the February 5th meeting, right?
That is correct. Is there something that, some snow or a reason for that, in the end, was there some issue? Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let me repeat, we have, we have two options here. I would accept a motion to favorably recommend 2024-02/06 as requested, or an option to, a motion to recommend denial for request 2024-02/06. I'll entertain either one of those motions.
Mr. President, in light of the testimony that we've heard from the community, Councilman Washington, I move that we accept staff's unfavorable recommendation regarding this petition.
Second. Second to that motion.
Okay. Marco, roll call, please.
Vice President Bonds?
Yes.
Member Fisher?
Yes.
Member Sarah, or President Sarah?
Yes.
Uh, Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
And Member Allen?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll show by a vote of six to zero, that would be an unfavorable recommendation. This still proceeds to city council, but with that unfavorable recommendation.
Mr. President, may I make a comment?
You may.
Uh, I'll be brief. I really appreciate the community coming out, I appreciate the petitioner coming out. I, I really liked what Councilman Washington stated, that it is something that the city could use and benefit from, but just perhaps in the wrong location. So, I would encourage, because I did not hear a response when Commissioner Miller asked, was another meeting set? I believe another meeting can be set. Ms. President, that's, that's going to be the pleasure of the president if he allows you to speak, but I think a meeting should be set. I think that meeting should be set with the community, with the council, and everything that was stated, because it is something that the city could benefit from. We would hate to see it go, but given the expansive expertise of Ms. Sharp, as well as some of us who are real estate and development savvy, it just probably needs to be placed someplace else. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. All right, we still have one more agenda item for today's meeting. This is PC 2025-07. It is a replat combining two parcels. Ms. Sharp?
This is a petition by Dan Terzman, representing Sixers Gas Station at the, at the location of 5310/5334 West Ridge Road, at the corner of Ridge Road and Burr Street. This petitioner has also been before the Board of Zoning Appeals. During that time, they asked for a development standards variance and a special use request to permit a gas station. The special use request is going to the council with some conditions, and the development standard variance was approved. This parcel itself is on, it has two different parcels, and the gas station proposed would be on both parcels. So, the request is to combine those two parcels into one taxing unit, so to speak, to one tax parcel. And I've reviewed the petition, reviewed their publication, their proof of notice, it is complete. We did not receive any public input prior to February 14th. My recommendation is favorable towards this petition.
Thank you. Are there any comments from commissioners? Any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed, and I would entertain a motion, we obviously have two, two options here, to favorably recommend it as requested or recommend denial. So, I hear a motion either way.
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed in a favorable manner towards this commission, towards petition 2025-07.
Thank you.
Second.
Who's second? Okay, thank you. Roll call, please, Marco.
Vice President Bonds?
Yes.
Member Fisher?
Yes.
President Sarah?
Yes.
A Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
And Member Allen?
Yes.
Okay, we'll show by a vote of six to zero, there is a favorable recommendation on petition 2025-07.
Thank you. Unless we all want to hang around a little longer, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for attending, and thank you for your comments.